Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Braintree Town Council meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you please remain standing and join me in a moment of silence for our men and women in uniform, please? Thank you so much. Please be seated. If you could have the roll call, please.
Counsel Berica?
Here.
Counsel Flaherty?
Here.
Counsel Hume will not be attending this evening. Counsel Maglio?
Here.
Counsel Moran?
Here.
Counsel Quilty?
Here.
Counsel Reynolds?
Here.
Counsel Ringus?
Here.
Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Thank you. Okay. The first item on the agenda under announcements is for us to recognize the Braintree American Little League team that we are also very proud of, that did such wonderful things this year. Can we immediately just have a round of applause for these guys? So I would like to call Mayor Joyce up to start us off. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Counsel President. Well, certainly, the gentlemen and coaches behind me need little introduction, but yes, we are very happy to have, again, at Town Hall, they're gonna get sick of us, I think, the 2025 New England Regional Champs, our very own Braintree American Little League U-12A team coached by Coach Frank Fasoli, with also assistant coaches PJ Kippenhand, Sean Needle, Chad Guthro, who is coach number four, as I understand it, and I think Dan Saret, who we have probably yet to name as coach number five in the extent of all this, so apologies for that. There's so many members of the Braintree American Little League organization and coaching staff, parents, certainly the momentum of adults and family members behind these wonderful players is, it runs deep, as we know Braintree, Braintree support runs deep. If you were in, at any of the games, certainly in Connecticut or Williamsport, which was great, and so many Braintree people got down there to watch them and cheer them on, we had a very great representation and certainly a lot of excitement this summer from this team. Not only were they District Eight champions, Section Two champions, Massachusetts State champions, they were the New England Regional Champions and won a game at the Little League World Series, so they've set the bar high for themselves and for the Little Leagues in Braintree, so congratulations. I'm gonna invite Coach Fasoli up to say a little bit about the team and then give you all, give you all a chance, but I just wanted to recognize them and maybe they can just stand up when I say their name and then we'll invite Coach Fasoli up. So we had Frankie Fasoli, Ryan Fennel, Jack Cushing, Charlie Doolin, Trevor Inglis, Henry Kuka, Cam, I don't wanna mispronounce your last name, why are you Cam? Cam, how do you say it? Norman, Cam Norman. Thank you. Kayden McCarthy, Owen Kippenhand, Logan Needle, Sam Trotta, and Coleman Guthro. Coach Fasoli, you wanna come on up?
Coach.
Thank you, and thank you for having us tonight. Really wasn't prepared for this one, but yeah, like Mayor Joyce said, that, you know, it took so many people, you know, like five coaches, it took so much more than that, you know, PJ, Sean, myself, we started with this group when they were eight years old, and we've been through the roller coaster with them. You know, the ups, the lows, at 11, they had a really hard year, and we lost in the district final, and that was heartbreaking at Hollingsworth, and I think that just fueled them, you know, to come back at 12, being their last season, and they, I mean, these guys wanted to practice more than we did. You know, they were out there every single night practicing, we didn't miss a day, and it was just a testament to what they pulled off and having the town behind us. I said to, you know, so many people that when we were in Bristol, just the, the crowd of blue that you saw there and the fans when we played New Hampshire that had, I don't even think they had half the stands full, and Braintree was overflowing. You know, the high school team, the high school coach, I mean, it was just endless. And we just heard when we went to Williamsport, because we were on the road for 17, 18 days, we just were getting videos and photos and the town behind us, it was amazing, so. We couldn't do it without the town of Braintree, so thank you.
Wanted to open it up to the counselors, if they wanted to add anything. Counsel Moran?
Mr. President, I'm a former board member of Braintree American, I played in Braintree American, my kids played in Braintree American, I lost every championship game I was in as a player, did coach a couple to win. Your season starts in March when you're doing cleanup on the fields, you know, dads are out there and the moms are out there in March. You know, then you get through your, your regular season, then you have to pick your, your team for travel, and that's hard. You know, making majors in Braintree American is hard, making a travel team, especially the 12 travel team, is exceptional. Winning a district is ridiculously hard, and you can look up on the signs and see how few district championships we've had, but we've had a lot in the last, you know, I think we had four when I was on the board, I had nothing to do with it. Winning a sectional is really hard. You guys won a state and then you won New England, and then you kicked Texas around, that was awesome. You should, how, how you guys didn't have three home runs in that game, I don't know. The wind wasn't with you, I don't know. The parents, you guys were very well behaved on TV, made us all very proud, great job. Sacrifices you made were unbelievable this year, just to be able to support, you know, to put up with kids, to practice every day. What you give up to, to have your kids have this experience is, is incredible, but you did it and you, you know, you were incredibly supportive, we were, you know, everybody in Braintree was happy to support you. You made us very proud, you gave us a summer that was unforgettable, and congratulations, and please all go to Braintree High. Thank you very much.
Counsel Quilty?
I just wanna say to everyone, to the boys, at a very young age, you've had a really good experience in life, you know what it is to win and you know what it is to lose, and that builds character, it makes you a more well-rounded people, it makes you more compassionate and understanding towards other people, so that's gonna, you know, it's going to really benefit you in your life. So I just wanna say congratulations and thank you for all of your hard work.
Counsel Flaherty?
Well, so you guys had a really great summer, and I bet you had some good stories to tell your friends when you got back to school, but then they weren't even surprised because they already knew. What I think maybe you didn't realize while you were out there playing ball was that you made your whole town's summer special in the process. I say that because, you know, what you don't know yet is that when grownups get to watch kids shine, really shine, doing something that they love, it makes us proud, but beyond that, it makes us hopeful. Like, if our kids can do that, anything's possible. And, you know, that, it was in that spirit that the whole town came out to cheer you on. Hope is a really rare and precious feeling. I know you were just out there playing the best baseball that you could, but you delivered a lot more than that. And the only thing I can add to that is that you did it because you decided to make baseball the most important thing to you. You made it important by being ready on time for every practice and every game and getting in the car when it was time to go and not five minutes after it was time to go. You made it, you wanted to be great players, so you learned the fundamentals, and you wanted your team to be great, so you made your teammates important. Not just for one year, but for years, you guys have been working together and doing this together. And what I also want you to notice is that when you do that, when you make something important, when you elevate it in your life and you say, "This is the thing," everyone around you kind of reacts to that and they also make it important. Think about how much time your coaches invested in giving you strategy and helping you, like, make it through when the game didn't go well and, you know, throwing, throwing a million balls all the time so you can catch and catch and catch and catch and catch and hit and hit and hit and hit. And think about your parents and all of the times when they washed your uniform late at night because it needed to be cleaned for the next day, or the pizza parties that they threw and all the driving around and the arrangements and things that you didn't pay any attention to, but I know that they invested lots of time in. They did all of that because you made something important, and, and look where it got you. Like, it was an, it's an amazing achievement, and you can do anything in your life if you decide that you're gonna make it important. And so congratulations to you for doing exactly that.
Thank you, President Ryan. I have to say, one of the best things about this job is getting to celebrate the accomplishments of our residents, especially when there are students and young people in town. And as I've been thinking about your accomplishments and what I've observed and heard from some of your parents and friends and grandparents I've spoken to, is it's not just what you did over this summer, but how you did it with sportsmanship and integrity and teamwork and supporting each other on and off the field. And that really inspires me, and I know it inspires so many residents in Braintree, that you guys have done all of these, had all of these achievements, and you've done it with a level of sportsmanship that's unmatched, and that is even more important than the accomplishment, if you ask me. And it really reminds us that when we work together as a team, as a community, as friends and neighbors, truly anything is possible, and you all brought that to life for us this summer. So thank you and congratulations.
Guys, congratulations. It was an amazing run. You, as all the other councils have already announced, you guys really were a testament to teamwork, coming together, overcoming adversity from years past and sort of really sticking to it and taking this the whole way. And you weren't just Team Braintree, I mean, we're always gonna, you're ours, we're gonna call you Team Braintree, but you became Team Massachusetts, and like you shared today tonight, you guys became Team New England, too. So it wasn't just this sort of celebration of Braintree, but you guys unite in the state and you unite in our region. One of the coolest stories I had, and there was a lot of them, because there was, there was people cheering, and there was watch parties everywhere, I was at a bar in Boston when one of your games was on, and people in Boston were cheering Needle, and I got to say, "I know that kid's dad," like, this was really cool. And so it wasn't just Braintree, it wasn't just here, it was, it was, it was everywhere. But really, you know, what you guys did also transcended just baseball, and I think Counsel Berica touched on that a little bit. You know, at times, our town can get divided over different things that are going on, but for a couple months this summer, it was, the entire town was one sort of unified community that was cheering you guys on and watching you on this journey that you took, whether it be the, the restaurants, having watch parties, whether it be the bars, whether it be Dunkin' Donuts handing out signs so that we could hand them, culminating, and you guys, what, checking out Fenway and having a parade through town. Unfortunately, this is gonna be the last stop and it's with us, but you guys had a great run. To the coaches, obviously your passion was shown through, through taking these kids on this journey, and I think it's an amazing one that you took with them. And as, as some of the councils have said to the parents, obviously there's some sacrifices, I think there was a good chunk of time you guys weren't actually at your homes, so it must be nice to be back. But this was quite an experience, the town is proud of you, the state is proud of you, New England is proud of you, and so thank you guys for everything you did this summer. Awesome job.
Counsel Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't wanna repeat some of the previous speakers, but I agree with them wholeheartedly. We, as a community, are very, very proud of what all of you young men were able to accomplish this summer, extraordinary accomplishments. To carry that with you the rest of your life will be very important, and you'll find it'll get you through some very difficult times. You had to, you had to put yourself through those difficult times in a national spotlight. That's grace under pressure, guys. You keep that up, things are gonna go all right for you. You managed to keep this entire town and New England on the edge of our seats, and that's not easy to do, as some of the previous speakers have spoken about. We thank you for bringing this town together in such a great, great event. And as your coach, Fasoli, as he pointed out, your dedication to your team, your willingness to give all of yourself, to go out there to practice every day, to out, to outwork your coaches at such a young age, that is really something to be proud of. Those were the difference makers, I'm sure you've learned that for yourselves. So congratulations and thank you very much. Thank you, coaches, thank you, parents, thanks for a great accomplishment in giving us a special summer. Thank you.
Counsel Maglio?
So my colleagues on the council have said it all, so I'm gonna say, congratulations, great job, rah rah.
Thank you. You know, I didn't grow up in Braintree, now that I'm not running for reelection anymore, I'll make, I'll tell everybody, I didn't grow up in Braintree. And when I moved to Braintree, I was very early on told that Braintree is a baseball town, and I moved here 29 years ago from Reedville, and over and over again, I've just seen the wonderful ballplayers we have had in this town, and somebody mentioned, "This is the best part of our job," when all the young people that work so hard for what they accomplished come in and we get a chance to say thank you, and we, it's, it's wonderful that we can acknowledge you. So, you know, you gave us all a ride all summer. I'll tell you a quick little story, I was watching the Red Sox the other night with my friend from Florida, and the Red Sox kinda fumbled the game away, and my friend said, "The Braintree Little League know how to run the bases better than the Red Sox." I said, "You're right." And, but he, he's down in Florida and he watched the game, so people all over the country, from, from, from Boston, from Braintree, everybody was so proud of you guys, and thank you so much, and you're gonna have that for the rest of your life, that accomplishment, and it really shows you, when you work hard, you can accomplish anything, and you guys already have that. So thank you so much and congratulations, guys. So what we're gonna do, the councils are gonna come around to the front of the table here, we're gonna call up the ballplayers and the coaches, we're gonna give them a little recognition, and then after that, we're gonna all go over in front of the stage and try to get a picture of everybody and all the parents, and everybody can come up and take whatever pictures they want, and that's the game plan, so let's do that. Okay, we're gonna start off with Frankie Fasoli. Ryan Fennel. Jack Cushing. Charlie Doolin. Trevor Inglis. Henry Kuka. Cam Norman. Kayden McCarthy. Owen Kippenhand. Logan Needle. Sam Trotta. Coleman Guthro. Now we're gonna do the coaches. Sean Needle. Coach PJ Kippenhand. Coach Chad Guthro. Coach Dan Saret. And the head coach manager Frank Fasoli, come on down. So we're gonna go over and take pictures, everybody can get up and take pictures, but then, like, a couple minutes later, five minutes, we have to start the meeting back up, so you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here, all right? up, so you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here, all right?
Do you want me to take them as well?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay. I'll see Nick Thursday night.
You see that, him?
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Okay, we are back after that nice moment with the Braintree American Little League, and we still have announcements. Counsel Barrica?
Thank you very much. I want to make an announcement that there will be a seasonal family flu walk-in clinic on Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., right here in Town Hall in Cahill Auditorium. This will be on a first-come, first-served basis, and you can get your flu shots for free right here at Town Hall. It's open to adults 18 years and older and students in grades five through 12. Please remember to bring your insurance card, and if you are under 18, please bring a parent or a guardian with you as well. So again, that's Wednesday, October 22nd, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Counsel Flaherty?
Thank you. Okay, so I've been to a lot of birthday parties before, but I have never been to a 250th birthday party. However, this year marks the 250th birthday of the U.S. Navy, and you are all invited to join the American Legion Post 86 as they honor the legacy, service, and sacrifice of the U.S. Navy and its sailors. The event will be right here in Cahill Auditorium this Friday, October 10th, at 10:00 a.m., and I hope you all can come.
Thank you. Counsel Ringus?
Thank you, President Ryan. Unfortunately, we had some, some happiness here, but there was a sad announcement that I just wanted to make as well. Dr. Maureen Murray-Adamsen, who was our former superintendent of schools, passed away unexpectedly on September 20th. I was lucky enough to serve with Dr. Murray when I was a member of the school committee. She had a 40-year career in education, and it culminated with her time here as the superintendent of schools from 2013 to 2015. Prior to that, she was the assistant superintendent of Braintree Public Schools, beginning in 2007. I don't know, working with her was amazing. She was so dedicated to the kids of Braintree, so dedicated to education, and really making this town a better place. She worked in tandem at the time with Dr. Kurtzberg and our business director, Peter Kress. And then when Dr. Kurtzberg retired after, you know, three-plus decades, she served in that interim sort of role as we sort of approached Dr. Hackett coming in. She took two years to sort of be that segue from Dr. Kurtzberg to a new, to a new superintendent. And she truly, truly, truly was dedicated to this town and our schools, and it is, it's an unfortunate loss. So if we can just keep Dr. Murray and her family in our prayers.
Thank you, Counsel Maglio.
Thank you very much, Counsel Ryan. So I have two brief announcements. The first is regarding the Four River Basin Summit on Health, Safety, and the Environment. Today was the lunchtime Zoom on health and wellness, there will be a recording of that that will be made available. Dr. Philip Landrigan was the speaker. Next Tuesday, October 14th, Emergency Safety and Preparedness with Dr. Nathan Phillips. And on Tuesday, October 21st, Environmental Actions with Dr. Sandra Steingraber. This is something that I've worked on along with FRACs, the Four River Residents Against the Compressor Station, and it's really to take a big-picture look at what is happening, what are some of the things that we need to know, and then what can we do in order to take matters into our own hands for our own health, safety, and to preserve our, our precious environment of the Four River. You can sign up for this by, you could reach out to me, you could go to non-compressor.com, and these flyers are circulating everywhere. Second announcement is, if it's okay, can I do two? So the second announcement is on for Thursday, October 16th. The East Braintree Community Action Coalition has put together a Braintree Candidates Forum. All of the candidates for contested races are invited to come and answer a moderated Q and A section forum, and this is, it'll be right here, the time is 7:00 p.m. It'll be moderated by Tomisha Civil, who is a governor's council, our governor's council representative, and it's open to the public. It will also be covered, carried by B-CAM, so feel free to log in and watch live, or to watch the recap. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Okay. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for June 17, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. I oppose, that's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is Old Business 25052, Council President, Town Council Rule 28A, Executive Session Minutes Review and Approve or Take Up Any Action Related There Too. I'm gonna refer to Counsel Ringus. We had an O and R meeting earlier tonight.
We did, thank you, President Ryan. The Committee of Ordinance and Rules did meet earlier this evening as to this proposed Town Council Rule 28A, which is to address executive session minutes. Ultimately, after some deep discussion on it, we did table the matter. At this point, the way that it's written seemed like it was gonna create more wrinkles, and so it was some unnecessary language that I think that would have complicated the process, more so than it needed to be. So at this point, we did vote to table it.
Okay, so I think it'd be appropriate for a motion to table now? Do we have a motion to table this matter?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. I opposed, that's unanimous. The last item on the agenda is to refer the new business to its respective committees. Do we have a motion on that?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. I opposed, that's unanimous. So I believe that is all the matters we have before us tonight. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 21st, at 7:30. I'd like to thank Bill Needham and Jerry Komic from B-CAM for televising our meeting tonight, and with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. I opposed, that's unanimous. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.